Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Village Board to order for September 2nd, 2025. And if you would all please rise and join the board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Maggie, if you could please call the roll.
Trustee Mangue Nero.
Here.
Trustee Dunnington.
Here.
Trustee Shirley.
Here.
Trustee Labads.
Here.
Trustee Zick.
Here.
Trustee Santa Maria. Trustee Bertucci.
Here.
Trustee Schwingback.
Here.
President Tenalia.
Here. Thank you, Maggie. The next item is approval of minutes. This would be for a meeting on 8/1825. And then is there anyone who wishes to have a correction made? Or anyone wishes to recuse themselves or pass from that minute, those meetings? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of the minutes.
Second. Motion by Trustee Labads, seconded by Trustee Shirley. Anyone in the audience? Okay, all just favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries. And the next item is the approval of counts payable for our warrant register dated 8/30/25. And for that, I'll call on Trustee Bertucci.
Mayor, I'll move approval of the warrant register for the check date 8/30/2025 and the amount of $2,289,565.62.
Second. Motion made by Trustee Bertucci, seconded by Trustee Schwingback. Is there any further discussion from anyone in the dais? No, anyone in the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Maggie, please.
Trustee Bertucci.
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback.
Yes.
Trustee Shirley.
Yes.
Trustee Mangue Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington.
Yes.
Trustee Labads.
Yes.
Trustee Zick.
Yes.
President Tenalia.
Yes. All right, very good. And we have no recognitions or communications or public hearings, but we do have some citizens to be heard on items that are not on the agenda tonight. And I'll call you up. There's a handful here. If I could just remind everyone that what we like to try and do is keep our comments to three minutes or less. If you have to have more, that's understandable, but we'll try and do that if we can. The first person who'd like to speak is Bridget Christoffersen. Is Bridget here? Bridget? You wanted to address under citizens to be heard.
What?
Go ahead.
I would like to talk about the concerts that are on Thursday nights, and they steal our par- I live at 55 South Vale, we park at 22 South Vale, which is an Arlington Heights parking garage, and they constantly steal our parking spots. And I'm so sick and tired of that.
Okay, again, so which building do you live in?
55 South Vale, and we park in 22 South Vale, which is an Arlington Heights parking spot.
Okay.
It belongs to Arlington Heights. We pay $75 for our parking spot.
Okay. It's Dunton Towers, sure, sure. Okay, so what I can do is I can have you have a connection with our village manager, Randy. We do have a parking garage staff member who handles all of these things, and so we can look into it. The good news is there are no more concerts for this year.
Yeah.
You witnessed the last one on Thursday night. But let's get this solved so that we have no problems with for next year. So Randy, if you wouldn't mind giving Bridget your business card, and we can have further communication on the phone. Okay?
And I wish it would increase it to one over $100. Because $55 is not enough.
Sure, we can, we can talk. Okay, thank you, Bridget. Next is Ronald Stolberg. Ronald, come on up.
Yeah, next month, October 24th, is World Polio Day. Before we celebrate, there's things you should know. Polio enters the body in the mouth, and the virus grows in the intestines and is secreted out in the poop. Polio causes paralysis when the virus attacks the motor neurons. The paralysis increased with the use of harmful insecticide DDT. DDT is now banned in the U.S., but still used in other countries, mainly India. Polio is spread in dirty water. Rain carries the virus into the rivers and lakes, and the people drink the contaminated water. To stop polio, sanitize the poop before it gets into the water or sanitize the water. Poop can be sanitized by drying and burning. Water is cleaned first at water waste treatment plants, which the poop is digested by bacteria. Then the water is filtered and sanitized with either UV light, heat, or chemically chloride. We have reduced polio with proper water sanitation, not only in the United States, but throughout the whole world. Our medically, my medical, our medical industry does not want to end polio. The medical industry, with support from public health, increases polio by killing monkeys, then growing polio in the monkey's kidneys, and dropping into the mouths of children. They include a fairy tale along with a goodwill offering, so people will take it. Not only will this spread the polio, you will also spread any contaminants in the process. SV-40 was spread from monkeys to people in polio drops, even in the United States, and possibly HIV, and who knows what else. We have over 50 years of history to see the results of our actions. The information is available, and you can find all this and much more on the Internet. I got some information from the Public Health Department explaining how their actions are causing polio and paralysis. Who should get this in?
You can give it to Maggie. Is that it? Okay, thank you. Next is Don Lucky Jr. Don, come on up.
Thank you for having me. I'll be brief, Bridget. So as other people have more time, I just wanted to give you a brief, brief update. Thank you for having me again.
Sure.
Just going back, you know, we're still here, as you may recall from my last meeting, we were looking at the offset. That's, that's still correct and still in play. I have an update. There's really three things. We use the letter O, the letter R, and the letter F, okay? R is for roof. O is for, boy, what is for? No, O is for the whole, the whole place. I'm sorry, I lose the track. Those, no, O is the offset, the tax offset for 100 years for the entire property, okay? That's using our federal power. The last part of the agenda was F for fill the stadium, okay? And through a previous sponsor, I'm working on filling the stadium completely the whole first time. And again, people ask me the question, why are we helping billionaires? We're not. Directly, we're helping the taxpayers offset so that one, not one, the man in blue, not one, not one cent is spent from a taxpayer, taxpayer perspective. Yet everyone enjoys it. So I mean, it's really complicated. I just, I'm not going to take time away. It's that detailed, okay? But those are the three things. The tax offset for 100 years, that's our only goal this, this year, okay? The roof from nation's roof, if it's got a roof, okay? All we need is the cost of that. We can start, continue that conversation. And then the first time fill of the stadium. I just wanted to segue that quickly, that if people help me do that in terms of a stipend, as, as the president of the company, why can't I involve the fire and, and, and police forces to also tap into this catalog as, as our thanks to help? And maybe there's some things that we can get in there as well to, to show, because it is, the main example of this is to have an illustration of what our tax, of what our taxpayers can do. And this is perfect illustration. We're not the first time on the block. People have stole our playbooks on a community level. I'm not going to get mad about it. We're going to get even the right way and do it the right way, just like, just like a football game. And I learned a lot from the beers and the current coaching staff, a lot, a lot, driving and navigating this whole big thing. So I'm going to share that, I'm going to leave this with Maggie.
Yep.
You're welcome to go in and just show you how honored. We have a new customer number and a login. You can start logging in and filling in what we put in the stadium. Of course, this is best directed at Manica Architects, if they're the ones they just printed out and it shows, you know, here's what was filled up for Allegiant Stadium, et cetera.
Okay.
So just wanted to give you the update.
All right, thank you, Don. Appreciate it. Next is Donald Miersman.
My name is Donald Miersman. I've lived in Arlington Heights for 44 years. The trustees and the Village of Arlington Heights staff have been dealing with very difficult issues recently, and they have all demonstrated their integrity. The mayor and the village manager should be recognized for their patience and respect for different opinions. We already have an ordinance that addresses the use of public property by individual persons. We do not need another one. The sign posted on the wall of the train station in downtown Arlington Heights says, "Closing hours of village property. It shall be unlawful for any person to remain in or on any land or facility owned or operated by the village between the hours of 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM." LO Section 8-522. It is my understanding that this sign must be posted by any area in question before the ordinance can become enforceable through complaint. In my opinion, the Village of Arlington Heights has some options here. Post a sign at the bench at 201 North Vale and allow the process to follow through. Another option is to remove the bench. The number one priority, the most important issue, is the safety of the lady on the bench. There are issues with the lack of hygienic facilities, with the proper storage of food, overnight vulnerability, exposure to extreme weather, and proximity to heavy traffic. The bench is 15 feet from Northwest Highway. We have all seen Northwest Highway covered in rain and ice and snow. A vehicle going 30 miles an hour can cover that distance in .34 seconds. This is an accident waiting to happen. My wife and I visit the lady on the bench regularly. We have been reminded over and over that simply relocating unhoused people does not solve the big problem. This is true. But in this unique situation, the particular circumstances of this individual and her needs indicate that relocation would have positive outcome. This is about safety. The lady on the bench needs help. Thank you.
Thank you, Donald. Is Daniel Lorden? Is it Lord Zen? No, I think it's Lorden. Daniel, come on up. You're next.
Thank you for hearing me. I'm, my, my concern is, I live at 55 South Vale, apartment 710. I've been there for four years. And this relates to the parking, the issue that was Ms. Christoffersen was relating to. But I was thinking of, I've been paying $75 a month for parking all this time. It hasn't, it hasn't varied at all. But I have noticed more and more cars parked in assigned tenant parking areas during the week. And it's disconcerting for me to have to search to the extent that I have with, for a parking space. And I also would like to have a reduction or an elimination of the $75 charge. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Daniel, thank you for your comments. Next is Doreen. Doreen Janetta? That does not look like a Doreen.
No, get smart. I'm not, obviously not Doreen.
Okay.
That's Doreen.
Welcome.
Talks a mile a minute, but she didn't want to do this. Now, to pick up on what that gentleman was talking about before with the lady on the bench, her name is Angel. Angel was gone for three days a week ago. Ask Angel where she went. She doesn't answer. She doesn't want to answer. I don't know if she was afraid or whatever. My purpose in coming tonight was to listen to what the task force that's supposed to be formed on the homeless was going to do. What are the objectives? What are the goals? Who's going to be on it? When's it going to meet? But it's not on the agenda, so maybe another time. It would seem to me that Arlington Heights has made progress since 2020. That's when I met Richie under the clock tower. Richie was a homeless person, always drunk as a skunk. Richie is gone now. He's dead. Then the basement under the show downtown Arlington Heights by Starbucks. Herbie. Herbie lived down there for a long time. Herbie's gone now. So that area is safe. Arlington Heights train station, compared to what it was six months or eight months ago, you can walk through it now safely. So whatever y'all did, it's working. So if the problem is now boiled down to Angel, Steve, Andy, Rusty, and some of those folks that hang out next to Javier's, it's a different situation. So whatever you did, whatever magic you worked to clean up the other areas, you can work it again without criminalizing Angel or those like her who have no place to go. Now, we have journeys up the road on Northwest Highway, but everybody isn't allowed in journeys because there may be troublemakers. You have social services here. Point is, from my standpoint, I'd like to know if there will be a task force. If so, what are its objectives? When is it going to meet? When is it going to have an open forum to discuss alternatives? Because in the article I read in the newspaper, someone standing here said, why don't you put them on your front lawn? Well, that's certainly an alternative. And you know who you are. That's what the article said. Well, I think it's a lot of baloney. Have them in your home. Don't, don't let them sleep on the front lawn or on the back lawn. Welcome into your home. Point is, I'd like to know when it's going to meet, where it's going to meet, what are the objectives? Thank you.
All right, I'm going to, I'll, I'll give you a couple of thoughts based on your commentary. Number one, and you don't have to stay up there, you can sit down.
I may want to comment.
The, no, you've had your three minutes, I'm sorry. The, there is a word that you use that I, I want everybody to, to ignore and forget that was ever spoken, because I know for fact, nobody on this board and nobody in those chairs want to criminalize anyone for being homeless or unhoused. That is a word that someone invented, and it stuck because it was a popular, fun word to use. Nobody up here wants to do that. So there'll be no criminalization. There, there might be solutions that are figured out that may be awkward or uncomfortable, but there, it's not about criminalizing anyone. So I wish the paper wouldn't have written that, and I wish that people would forget that word exists when it pertains to this subject. The second item, and I can't remember now what it was we were talking about, but the task force is, is not really a task force. The word we're using there is in a consortium. We are not appointing a task force to take care of criminal, excuse me, homeless. See, there you go. Homeless people or unhoused people. We're, we're going to have a consortium of folks from different communities involved so that together, there can be better solutions discovered and talked about and, and hopefully applied in different situations. But it's not going to be something that this mayor or this board is going to appoint. Our village manager, manager Recklaus, is already working on that with some of our Health Department folks here. I've met with Palatine, he and I both have. We'll be doing the same with Mount Prospect. And eventually, there'll be this consortium of really educated, smart, good thinkers together to help solve this situation, not criminalizing.
Just one comment.
Quickly.
You didn't mention.
You have to do it over there.
You, you didn't mention Displanes in.
We'll, we're going to grab them all.
Because Displanes has the situation now that Arlington had three or four years ago.
We, we understand. This will be more than two or three. This will probably be five or six different communities together. But thank you for bringing it up. All right, Doreen Janota or Janetta?
I'm his other half.
Okay, you're all set? All right, okay.
He said it.
Henry? Henry Keely?
Kyle.
Kyle, come on up, Henry. I'm really butchering names here tonight. I really apologize for that.
Good evening. I live at 1103 South Evergreen, behind the Credit Union and across Arlington Heights Road from what I'll call the Dandies Pizza Strip Center. For the last two and a half to three months, basically all summer, my neighbors and I have been kept awake, shall we say, by high-speed motorcyclists and young people driving vehicles that have been modified with mufflers that backfire. Usually starts at 7:00 in the evening, goes till about 11:00 at night. Last night was the worst. I stood on the corner of Arlington Heights Road and Magnolia for an hour. I saw two patrol cars go up and down, never chased after any of the speeders. There must have been 60 to 75 people spread out from the other strip center, a little further south, all the way up through Dandies to the end, past the, the vape shop, whatever, basically cheering on these people. These cars would rip down Arlington, from Central down to White Oak. They would cut down a side street, circle back around, come back up again. I would say there were 12 to 15 of these vehicles, backfiring and loud, and I called the police several times over the last couple of months. My neighbors have called the police. Every time we call the police, they say they're sending patrol cars. I stood there and watched patrol cars go up and down and never make any effort to chase after the speeders. I understand there's a problem. They can't go on private property. That strip center is private property. They probably can't go on there and ask those people to disperse. But for this to be going on this long, for two and three months, I have friends that live over off of Wilkie, New Wilkie Road, who say they can hear it all the way over there. So I'm sure the police can hear it up here in town. But I'd like to know, I, I don't know if any of the board members are aware of this, but, and the village manager, but something ought to be done about it, because somebody's going to get hurt. It's very dangerous. There are homes that are very close to Arlington Heights Road. One of these motorcycles loses control, it's going to be, there's going to be a disaster. But I don't see that anything has happened in the way of law enforcement in the last two and a half to three months.
Okay, well, thank you, Henry. I can, I can promise you that we're all aware of it.
Okay.
And it kind of, kind of newly aware of it. So I would expect that there'll be some conversation happen about that in the next coming days. Our police chief is aware. Randy, are you handing out a business card? Go right ahead. All right, we're going to go on to the last card that I have. And if anybody else has anything they want to say, feel free, raise your hand. Erin Doody or Doty?
Yeah, all right, a second. Good evening. I'm coming up and bringing up the rear here because my youngest needed a second story tonight, which is also the reason I don't have my notes. So you were all spared a light legal analysis of the Oregon houselessness and homelessness decision. Instead, having heard your comments, I'm just going to speak from the heart and reiterate. I grew up in the area. I'm a 214 grad. I grew up at Mount Prospect, and I specifically moved back to Arlington Heights to raise my kids. And I did so in the guise that the village has always presented itself as a welcoming place. I'd like to call the board's attention again to the momentum that was shown in the latest election for the Mental Health Board and the outreach of resources and the interest that the community has in trying to grow Arlington Heights into a committee and a community that is welcoming to all and that looks for problem-solving solutions outside of, as you said, criminalization. So I welcome your comments with respect to options to try and help the individuals in our community who are unhoused. And I would simply, having read the comments from the last Village as a whole meeting, encourage the board to listen to the much more well-versed constituents who spoke from their social services backgrounds and take to heart the comments that they have made with respect to what the village wants to see with respect to not just moving a problem around, but looking for humane and dignified solutions to help those in our neighborhoods who need it the most. Thank you.
Well said, thank you. All right, that's it. I see one more hand. Come on up, introduce yourself.
I appreciate the opportunity, sir. My name's Dave Mathis. I live over on Hints Road in Arlington Heights. I wanted to introduce myself. I'm running for state senator in the local district here. But I also wanted to bring up the attention that I was at a, I was at the farmer's market a couple of weeks back, and I had a young lady who kicked me out of there because I was talking to residents about the election, as I've been doing for about 800 people so far. I explained to her, I didn't create a scene or anything like that, but I ended up having to talk to a police officer, and I talked to a wonderful police officer, sergeant, I believe it was Sergeant Wilson. She was phenomenal on it. But I explained to her that it's my First Amendment right to be able to talk to people about an election on a public street in a public parking lot. I was told that I was not allowed to be there because there was a permit, and they had a permit to block off the public street. As I explained to the officer is that the, a permit to block off a street can't specifically restrict someone's First Amendment rights to talk to their neighbors about anything. I mean, if I wanted to protest the farmer's market, technically I could. I would never do that. I love our farmer's market, and I love our community. I did not, that's why I created an issue. But I wanted to bring it to the attention that there's a misunderstanding, apparently, when people are getting their petition, or not petitions, but getting their permits to have these events or whatever, that unless it's being, a ticket being sold, which would make it a private event or is on private property, that's the only time that you can really restrict anyone from being inside your property. If it's a public event, we should be able to walk freely through there, and I should be able to have a nice conversation with anybody in there and, and, and not be told in, and which weirdly enough, she signed my petition and then she kicked me out. So it was quite funny, but I just wanted to be clear that it's a First Amendment right to be able to talk to people on that. But the one thing that sergeants, the sergeant mentioned to me that I thought about and I looked into it a little bit further, was that she also said that if it says no soliciting at someone's house, which I don't know if you guys have been around, but like 90% of the houses say they don't want people selling stuff to them, that you can't go to their house. Well, petition signing and talking about elections is not soliciting. It's protected, and we are allowed to do that. However, if it says no trespassing or no, no political talk, completely different situation. Understand that completely. So I just want to bring attention, but I also wanted to thank you, sir. I, I talked to you briefly at the National Night Out. May not remember me. But I just want to introduce myself, and I look forward to talking with you guys more in the future. And if it's all right with you, I'd love to get your business card.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, thanks for the kind words about our officer. Anyone else? If not, we're going to move on in the agenda.
Mayor, can I just?
Sure, Gordon.
Real quickly, Greg, from a legal standpoint, because when I was campaigning, I, I was asked to stay on the outskirts of farmer's market, which, which was fine, but I also was inquisitive about that. So can the farmer's market and whatever permit they operate under, can they do what is being described? And what, is this gentleman have a foot to stand on to say that it was a First Amendment right for him to be able to be there in the parking lot and having conversations?
Yeah, Trustee Bertucci, thank you for the question.
Given the nature of the allegation and the potential issues involved, any advice that we'd render on that we would want to provide in a confidential way. So I don't wanna, you know, publicly discuss either way what the village attorney's thoughts would be on the situation. But rest assured, we'll work with the village manager's office and provide our analysis.
Okay. And sir, you got the village manager's card. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We're gonna move on in the agenda to the next item, which is the consent agenda. And we have five items on the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the board here that wishes to remove an item for discussion? Is there anyone who wants to vote pass on anything or vote no on anything on the consent agenda? Is there anyone in the audience that would like a trustee to remove an item for further discussion? Seeing none on any of those questions, is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Labed, seconded by trustee Dunnington. Any further discussion? Roll call and vote, right? Maggie, please.
Trustee Labed?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Zick?
Yes.
Trustee Minganero?
Hi.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
President Tanalia?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, now we're into new business and we have four items in here to discuss. The first one is PC docket number 25-011. It is 1331 West Dundee Road, Jamison's Char House. It's an amendment for, to the special use, to expand outdoor seating with a variance. Is the petitioner here? Why don't you come on up to the podium, please, and introduce yourself and tell us what you would like to have approved here tonight briefly. And I think staff will have a presentation afterward as well.
My name is Jim Liberas and I'm one of the owners of the Jamison's Char House. And first of all, I would like to thank the board of directors for the opportunity to apply for the expanded special use permit to the 940 square feet and also the variance to allow the partial enclosure of the outdoor seating area. Both the variance and the expansion will ensure my customers' dining experience is as comfortable as possible. And the canopy does not pose any hazard or danger or an eyesore, okay? And I hope at this time, the township continues to be flexible with restaurant owners like myself. This will continue to keep Arlington Heights as a top dining location in the Chicagoland area.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Ask Emily or Randy for staff report, please.
Yes, thank you. So as the petitioner indicated, they are before the board this evening to request an amendment to their existing special use permit with one variation request. The property is noted as at 1331 West Dundee. It's a little over two acres in size. And the existing zoning is B3 for a commercial use designation. They are requesting to amend their prior special use, which was granted in 2004, and to allow, to request a variation to allow for them to partially enclose their outdoor eating area. This is an aerial of the site. And this is a depiction of the existing outdoor eating area. So the area that you see in blue that wraps the building is what was previously approved in 2004. That is the 686 square feet. The area you see highlighted in yellow is the area that they expanded to in 2024. It's an additional 254 square feet. So combined, it is the 940 square feet that the petitioner indicated. This is a picture of the outdoor eating area with the existing screens down, just so you can get an understanding of the impact. The screens are down during inclement weather primarily to protect diners from, you know, wind, rain, that sort of thing. And as it relates to the overall property, part of what staff looks at when we receive applications for amendments to existing approvals is we do take a look back at those previous approvals to better understand the history of the property. In the case of Jamison's, the approval that was granted in 2004 did have a requirement for them to remove some non-compliant parallel parking stalls, six stalls in the area you see in yellow on the screen, as well as to plant some trees in three landscape islands that are highlighted in green. Those parking stalls were never removed. The landscape island trees, it's not clear whether or not those were planted. Staff did review a number of aerials to see if at one time they had been planted and perhaps it just since died and been removed. But the aerials were not of a high enough quality for us to really be able to tell if those trees were ever planted. But they are not currently there. And so as part of this request, staff did speak with the petitioner about bringing the site into compliance with that prior approval. He has agreed to do that. This slide also depicts the parking analysis. We always do a parking analysis with these types of requests. And just wanted to note that even with the removal of those six parallel parking stalls, the site still does have a surplus of four parking stalls. So no concern about the ability for them to park the additional square footage. The plan commission did consider this request and did unanimously recommend approval of the variation, subject to a number of conditions. One of the conditions I would like to bring to your attention is that this particular request will require a design commission application. So staff has requested that the screens, those white screens I showed earlier, be swapped out for black screens that are perforated just to reduce the aesthetic impact of the screens. And so that application needs to be submitted prior to this ultimately being approved via ordinance. Thus, the motion before the board this evening would be to direct staff and the village attorney to prepare those final documents granting the zoning relief that was requested, subject to those materials that you see in your packet tonight and also, of course, to us receiving that design commission application as noted in those conditions.
Thanks, Ms. Rodman. Could you go back to that site plan where you showed the yellow at the bottom there? Nope, the site plan.
Oh, sorry.
There, right there. And so are there, because you're, the yellow is on the grass berm, but are you saying that just along that edge, there are six parallel parking stalls in the asphalt?
There are, correct, yes.
But they've been removed.
So, and to remove those, are we just painting over the yellow stripes? Is that what we're doing?
Exactly.
Okay, great. Okay. Anyone on the board have questions on this? If not, we can have a motion and further discussion, whatever works best. Trustee Dunnington?
Thank you. I do have one question. I was reading that the outdoor area would only be allowed to be opened from May through September.
Correct.
And so I was just wondering if that is your request for those month? Or is that staff requiring just May through September? The reason I'm asking is just, there's often a lot of beautiful days in April and October. And I think outdoor dining is so popular. I wonder why it's May to September specifically.
Well, right now, we see that the demand is basically from May till the end of September. So that's with the staffing and everything, that's when we're gonna be opening it, okay?
So that's your preference?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Trustee?
Thank you. I'll make the motion, but then I have a question. I move to direct staff and the village attorney to prepare final documents granting an approval, excuse me, of an amendment to the special use permit ordinance 04-048 to expand the outdoor seating area to a total of 940 square feet and the zoning relief requested, subject to the recommended conditions, all as set forth in the agenda materials for tonight's board meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion made by trustee Labed, seconded by trustee Shirley. And you had a question?
I did. Obviously, I'm in favor of this, or I wouldn't have made the motion. But I still, I still don't quite get the screens. So right now...
Right now, I'm working with the contractor on the screens, the paperwork for the screens. That I haven't completed. But the canopy and the extra, that has all been done. And I hope that I get those to approved while I'm still working with the contractor on the screens.
Okay, yeah. I'm not too worried about those. It's just that when I saw the picture in the packet about the, with the screens, they look very dense, if you will, like a very tight weave, so...
Well, to give you an idea, last year, we only used them three times. Because we only, the only time that we would use them is if people were sitting out there and all of a sudden the rain passes by. But usually, if it's raining that day, of course, nobody sits out there. So they're more or less just an emergency thing. Because if you're sitting out there with your family and all of a sudden the passing shower passes by, I can't tell, I can't tell you, hey, get up and, you know, go inside.
That's what I would do.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, okay. And so now they'll be swapped out for this other format, for when you do need it?
Yes.
So, all right. Okay, thank you for the explanation.
All right. Okay, anyone else? Is there a yes?
No, I didn't have anything. I was gonna make a motion, but she read me to it.
I did.
Okay. All right, I guess we're, anyone from the audience?
I actually did have a couple of questions.
Oh, you do?
Thank you, yeah. I'm, first of all, trying to make sure I understand the timeline correctly. And Mr. Recalls, thank you for getting the, some of the answers back to me. And I saw them when I walked in the room here. The original variance was granted in 2004, correct? And been operating since. And when did the parking stalls get painted over?
The parking stalls got painted over right before, right towards the end of June.
Towards the end of June of 2025?
Yes.
So after 20 years of non-compliance?
Actually, we never opened it, even though we got the approval.
You never opened the outdoor seating area?
No.
I didn't realize that.
What happened was during COVID, the city granted us, most of the restaurants, a canopy type thing. Actually, it was like a tent, okay? And we went through the process and they were allowing us, because nobody could sit inside the restaurant, they were allowing us to do the tents outside. And the tent became very popular. And then, you know, from dealing with the public, once you give them something, it's hard to take it away from them. We have people that'll make a reservation in the summer and they specifically say, we want the patio or, you know, we're not gonna be happy. So that's, during COVID is when it became popular.
I understand. This is the piece that I didn't get out of what was in the packet. It's after, so from 2004 until 2020, that space was not used?
Not in use, yes, okay. Even though we had the approval, because there was really no demand for it. But during COVID, the patio became popular. And you know how it is, when you can't take something away from the customers.
I understand. And when did you make the expansion?
The expansion, we made it this year. Yeah.
That's something else that may need to be corrected in the packet. It said 2024. This is, I'm just trying to understand the timeline, which I didn't.
No, 2025 is what. But basically, during COVID, for a lot of restaurants like our own, to survive and, you know, keep our clientele and our employees, the tent actually saved our business.
I understand.
Yeah. But then it's the other aspect. You can't take something away from a customer when they've experienced this.
It's become very popular in Arlington Heights, as I understand it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I think that's it.
All right, anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor in a second. And no one from the audience, right? Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Okay, so you'll work with staff now to set up a time with the design commission and either, as I would suggest, think about whether you wanna spend the money on different screens or just not have them for those two or three days. I mean, that's your choice, of course. Yeah. I don't know what those would cost. My guess is they're not free. Okay, so next item on the agenda is item B, and that is the Dunkin' Donuts, which is a sign variation, docket DC 25-019. It is for 1010 East Rand Road. Is the petitioner here? Come on up, please. Introduce yourself.
My name is Sam Totokora. I have three Dunkin' Donuts restaurants in town.
You have three?
Three of them.
Okay.
One, North Arlington, one near Terramira Plaza, and one in Rand Road.
And do the other ones have this sign already, or is this the first one?
No, this is the first one for the drive-through. We are going for a permit. And I was really surprised that just to change the menu board to a digital menu board, we need a permit. So this is a long process, but I hope the village would consider going through a different process.
Is there anything you wanna share special about the reason that you wanna have this signed?
So right now, this is a static menu board and digital menu board. We have an opportunity to change things based on, when we do the download menu board, we have to manually go out in the winter, cold weather, summer, to manually stick the prices or change the menu board. So this would give us automatically match the pricing between, with the download, like a software.
Yes. Okay, understood. And there are other ones like this in town. Ms. Rodman, are you gonna give us a presentation on this?
I am. All right, thank you. So for you this evening is the sign variation request for Dunkin' Donuts on Rand Road. There are three variations they're seeking. Those variations include allowing the digital drive-through menu board, where we typically do not allow that. It's allowing the location of the drive-through board in front of the building, whereas the code requires they be located inside and rear yards. And then the last variation is to allow the menu board to be facing the public right-of-way, which is not allowed by code. This is, that red dot is the location of the Dunkin' Donuts. Just wanted to draw your attention to the unique configuration of the lot. So you can see it does have right-of-way on three sides, which is part of the challenge with this location in terms of being able to place the menu board in a manner that is compliant with the code. This is the site plan. You can see that the menu board is located kind of at the northwest corner of the building there. And it would be visible from both Rand Road and James Avenue. This is the view from James Avenue of the existing menu board. Close-up of what that menu board looks like, so you can understand what the petitioner was referring to in terms of having to manually swap out those panels or place stickers over certain components of the panel. This is the proposed menu board, not the best picture, but I think you've all seen these at restaurants, so you have an understanding of what they look like. Did want to point out that this menu board is significantly smaller than the existing menu board. So while it will be in the same location and it will be visible from the right-of-way, it is less than half the size of the current menu board. So from an aesthetic impact, it has a significantly reduced impact. This is the canopy that, you know, goes along with the menu board. So just wanted to share that. That is code compliant, does not require any variations. We already talked about the sign size. The design commission did unanimously recommend approval of these variations. They did place a couple of conditions on the variations, which are standard conditions related to the operation of menu boards. It does need to comply with all our regulations in terms of static displays, auto dimming, and the menu board being shut off when the business is, you know, when they're not currently operating. So the motion before the board this evening would be to direct staff and the village attorney to prepare the final documents granting the requested sign variations, subject to the recommended conditions set forth in your agenda materials this evening.
Thanks, Ms. Rodman. Okay, questions from the board? Trustee Bertucci?
Do you agree with all the conditions?
Yes.
Okay. With that being said, my office is kitty quarter from this Dunkin' Donuts and I would have to say that they've been good business neighbors. And their service has been very good. And I, there's no homes there. I would agree that everything will aesthetically fit very well. So I'd like to make the motion to direct staff and the village attorney to prepare final documents granting the requested sign variation relief, subject to the recommended conditions, all as set forth in the agenda materials for tonight's board meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion made by trustee Bertucci, seconded by trustee Schwingback. Further discussion from anyone on the board, or anyone from the audience for that matter. Seeing none?
I have a question for staff, actually. Mr. Recalls, or Mr. Ms. Rodman. That first condition and the ordinance against fully digital signs, is that dated? Is that something we should be looking at changing, given, as you said, that these are very common? Now, they're much lower cost to update. There's sort of what's being done with signs at drive-throughs?
It's an excellent question. I'm not sure when that ordinance was put into place, but it's certainly something we can put on our list to look at. but it's certainly something we can put on our list to look at as we look at amendments every year to see if it warrants revisiting.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was a, it was a relatively recent, um, ordinance. Um, and it was more about the regulation of those types of signs and, you know, those kind of digital message boards and so forth. And so we, we wanted to keep it where they, you know, are gonna have to kind of ask and make sure that the overall context works before granting relief, is what the design was. Doesn't mean it can't be changed, but that's how it was designed, kind of out of recognition that these, even this type of sign without, you know, if it were in a different location, could be, you know, a nuisance to neighbors or so forth. But it can certainly be revisited. Something I think we've done maybe in the last five, six years, something that, does that sound right?
Sounds right.
We, we've been talking about this from the days when I was on the design commission, because these were brand new back then. Uh, these electronic video boards was a brand new idea. And I would concur. There, there may be sign applications that come in where we say, oof, I don't know if that's gonna work right, because there's a house right next door or something like that. And if that were the case, staff could certainly, you know, have them go get the proper approvals. But you're seeing more and more and more of these as this is just common. And maybe, maybe it's time for something to change a little bit, make it a little less cumbersome.
And that would still give us the authority to look at those applications in that kind of a case and add a requirement to mitigate the nuisance, if you will, to the neighbor?
If it's the will of the board, we can, we can certainly, uh, you know, add that to the list and, and look at that as, as something else to update, kind of in the hopper.
Yep, maybe prepare something for us to, to review and with, with those being the, the goals, yeah. Trustee Betz, go ahead.
Whoever I am.
Trustee Lovetz.
Thank you.
Whoever you are, on my left.
Yeah, um, well, I know the, one of the big concerns we had and why we decided not to just let it be by right or just staff approval was because sometimes a restaurant is adjacent to a residential neighborhood and the placement of the sign, uh, we wanna have some control over it so that it doesn't impact the homeowners. And so that was a big part of the discussion, just to give you a little bit of background.
Agreed. Anyone else?
Yep.
Okay.
Real quick.
Oh, go ahead.
I would just mirror, I would just mirror what trustee Bertucci said as far as this location shouldn't impact anybody. And the specific location, though, why we still do wanna look at these things is the Golden Arch is up on North Arlington Heights Road. That was a problem area because that drive-through was very close to those
Yep.
townhomes directly to the west. And so it's one of the reasons why we wanted some oversight on these.
Yep, no doubt. There's some problem. It's not a perfect situation.
I think it's worked out good, because there was some give and take on both sides, and I think people are happy now, but there is precedent. That's all.
Alright. I think we're ready for a vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries. So you know what to do. Next, you're all set.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it, everyone.
Alright, and the next item C is Village Bank and Trust, which is two thirty-four West Northwest Highway. It's a sign variation as well. D- DC twenty-five dash zero four eight. Is a petitioner here? Come on up, please. Introduce yourself and share with us what you would like to do.
Good evening. My name is Leslie. I am the permit specialist for Omega Sign and Lighting, and we're the sign installer. I do have a little something here. Um, Village Bank and Trust is seeking approval for a new ground sign that is sixty-six square feet, where thirty-five square feet is the maximum allowed by code. Um, Omega Sign and Lighting believes that the sign will be helpful in directing traffic and a source of pride for the village as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Rodman, I think it's your ball again.
I won't repeat what we're looking at, since we just went through that. This is the location of the property in question. That's the zoning map. This is a B-five property. This is the site plan showing the existing signage. So what's in question is the removal of two existing signs. One is a monument style sign, one is a pylon sign, and replacing it with a singular monument style sign. So you can see, if you look at the, um, very bottom of the picture, those two areas show the two, uh, existing sign locations, and the new sign will be placed essentially where the sign to the left is. This is a picture from the roadway, from Northwest Highway, so you can see the two signs. The Baird and Warner sign is the pylon sign, and the Village Bank and Trust sign is the monument sign. These are just close-ups, so you can see what each individual sign looks like. Those will both be removed. These are the existing wall signs, which are not being evaluated this evening. Proposed landscape plan, and then this is the new sign that's being proposed. So it is, um, significantly larger than allowed by code, but it is essentially the same size as the two signs combined that are existing on the property. Staff is in agreement with the petitioner that the proposed sign, um, would be more visible than the two existing signs, and the proposed style is, uh, more aesthetically appropriate for the location. This is just a summary of what was in your packet. So the design commission did review this proposal and did recommend unanimously to grant the variation to allow the larger sign. So the sign would be sixty-six square feet, as opposed to the thirty-five that's typically allowed. There are a number of signs along Northwest Highway that are also sixty-six square feet. So while the sign is larger than allowed by code, it would be consistent with the signage that we see along that corridor. The motion before the board this evening, then, would be to direct staff and the village attorney to prepare final documents granting the requested sign variation relief as set forth in the agenda materials for the board's meeting this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodman. Okay, anyone from the board up here that has questions on this or further discussion? No one on the side? Trustee Lovetz.
Thank you. Um, I do have a little bit of questions. Um, this happens to be right behind where I live. Uh, so I see the, the existing signs a lot, and I think, to be honest, this will be quite the improvement, uh, especially the big tall signs. This will look a lot nicer. I also think the existing lower one is hard to see. So I can see why this makes sense to do this. Uh, my question actually has to do the landscaping at the base and what, um, is proposed.
Um, so we are proposing some, um, I wanna say it was lilies, yellow lilies. Um, but definitely we will follow code, whatever the village requests of us for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I was just concerned, um, that it won't be such a height that it would, um, kind of impede people being able to see it.
Yeah, we'll make sure that it's definitely visible from the street.
Okay, great. I think it's very nice looking. Thank you.
The proposed landscaping is proposed to be planted at twenty-four inches.
Okay, great, great. Thank you. I missed that.
Anyone else? Okay, anyone from the audience have thoughts or questions on this proposal? Seeing none, is there a motion for approval on this item?
I move to direct staff and the village attorney to prepare final documents granting the requested sign variation relief as set forth in the agenda materials for tonight's board meeting.
Second, motion made by trustee Manganero, seconded by trustee Zick. Any further discussion from anyone? If not, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None, motion carries. Okay, you're good to go as well.
Thank you.
And then the last item on the agenda is item D, and that's the approval and review of our twenty-twenty-six dash twenty-seven village strategic priorities. And I think what we'll do is hand this off to village manager Reckles to walk us through these.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you all know, uh, this was something, we had our village board retreat back in July, where we spent a long evening identifying the things that would be the areas of focus or highest priorities for the village in the coming two-year period. Uh, this is part of our normal process, where every two years we, we go through and kind of talk about what's worked, what hasn't worked, what we think are the, the biggest, most important things facing the village over the next two years. The list is not intended to be an exhaustive list of everything we're gonna be working on. The idea is that you're creating a list where you're choosing what is most important to the community as a whole for this two-year period. There are going to be issues that come up that we can't foresee. They're gonna take up a lot of our time. But this is what, this is a statement of intentionality of what is it that we really intend to focus on for this next two years and, and put our time and resources on. Uh, this is one part of the process, um, that where we, um, identify, um, the priorities. Then we, we're gonna be identifying tasks and, and goals and objectives at the staff level. This is kind of the time budget or business plan that we call in terms of identifying when things can reasonably get done in the next two-year period. Um, and then obviously you get it in the budget process, which is going to be supported by these priorities. And then we do the work and we repeat. These are our twenty-four to twenty-five strategic priorities, and I'm not gonna belabor these, but just for a point of reference, we did this again, well, a couple of years ago. And so since then, um, essentially the process really kicks off with the election, which in and of itself is a discussion of what the, the community's priorities should be. And obviously, um, the, the leaders are elected by the community that, that, um, the community feels, you know, best reflect, you know, what they wanna see in their village government. We concurrently conducted a community survey back in, in this spring. We received letters from the village boards and commissions. Uh, there were also department reports and presentations during this period, and then it culminated in the board retreat. The board retreat produced, it was kind of a, a rough draft version of this, where, uh, we used post-it notes to vote on different themes and wrote out kind of brief summaries of, of the different goals, and then the board voted on those. Since that time, staff has taken a crack at drafting statements that we believe reflected the overall will of the board. We know, uh, we're, we're never gonna get every word exactly where all nine of you would like to have it. Um, we try to, to get to something that everyone can at least support. That went out last month, um, and we received some feedback from board members, and we've tweaked some of the wording based on the feedback that we've received. And, um, so, uh, once we'll, we'll take a look at those tonight, and if these, as written, are things that the board can support, uh, you can, you would approve these priorities. And then staff will be working for the next couple of months on the business plan, which is individual projects with goals, objectives, deadlines, staff assignments. Um, and so that really gets into, you know, what are we gonna be working on, and who's gonna be working on it? What are we defining success as in order to afford these priorities? And then both the business plan and strategic priorities will be referred to for, um, to influence the budgeting process and operational decision-making for the next two years. So with that, I'll, I'll quickly go through our draft here. And again, this is based on what was, what was, uh, um, voted on at that retreat. We did our best to capture what was discussed. There were other items that received, there was one item that received one vote, which we didn't include, because really this, we, we do see this as an exercise in focus. Um, obviously, the board can change any of these things by motion tonight, because this really is supposed to be a, a series of statements that belong to the board or by the board. First, one thing we did differently this year is we have that opening statement that the board recognizes that the village's highest priorities will always be the maintenance of public safety, the provision of core services, and the continuing of fiscal responsibility with taxpayer resources. The idea is that those always are gonna come first and are always in the background, and, and we don't need to restate them or re-vote on them every year. In terms of our timely priorities, number one was continuing collaborative efforts with Chicago Bears Football Club, village residents and businesses, and all other local, regional, and statewide partners to deliver a transformative, responsible, one-of-a-kind redevelopment of Arlington Park that reflects community interests and strives to meet the village's strategic priorities. Second, and these were, are, are, uh, written in order of what got the most votes by the village board. Second, expand housing affordability and attainability strategies that are impactful on the local level and provide a variety of housing options for residents at all stages of life. Third, promote economic development initiatives to encourage timely progress on approved projects, support commercial districts by filling available storefronts, and attract unique business development to vacant properties to set Arlington Heights apart from neighboring communities. Fourth, establish policies and engage in efforts that improve street safety conditions for motorists, pedestrians, and other modes of transportation. Fifth, engage with stakeholders regarding historic preservation, uh, historic preservation of residential areas to determine if further regulations or resources should be implemented. Six, advance environmental sustainability through village-led programs, green infrastructure investment, and encouraging eco-conscious residential and, and business practices. And lastly, reinvigorate, support, and review the roles of the village's existing boards and commissions in pursuit of their purpose, and establish short-term task forces as needed to provide targeted collaborative input on key initiatives. So based on that, uh, staff recommends approval of the twenty-twenty-six, uh, twenty-seven strategic priorities as drafted, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Randy, um, appreciate that. I think that was well said. I, I know that there have been some questions that have floated around, and I'm gonna ask you this, if you don't mind, really quick. Are you intending, as the leader of all staff here, changing anything that you're doing when it comes to hiring or seeking out employees so far? Where in the recent past, due to goals from this board, you, you used the phrase casting a wide net. And are you planning to change anything that you're doing on that?
Not at all. Um, we, we've, we've had a, a lot of success in recent years in advertising for positions and a wider group of things, and advance of, you know, getting better, getting, getting a workforce that reflects the community we serve and, um, you know, getting demographic, you know, diversity and variety with our, and, and background with our candidates. And no, we've had a lot of success on that front, and, you know, we've shown those numbers before. We're not intending on changing that at all. Uh, we always look for and hire the very best candidate, but we try to look in, in alternative places to make sure we're getting people from, you know, every nick and, nook and cranny of the workforce, to make sure we're getting the highest number of qualified candidates we can to review.
Alright, well, well said. I, I wanna make sure that everyone heard us loud and clear, because I, because it's not, it's necessarily mentioned in this list. I, I, I want everyone to know that it's still top of our mind to always do those good deeds and work towards those outcomes, so. Okay, anyone on the board? Questions, thoughts on this list of items? Trustee Donington.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two comments about it. The first one is number five, um, is our statement about historic preservation. And in the statement, it says, "We'll determine if further regulations and resources should be implemented." And I really feel like we should have a, a different word in there, that it shouldn't be "if." I feel like we, as a board, have agreed that there is some kind of historical preservation that we do wanna do. We don't know what that's gonna look like, but that I feel like we're committing to do something for historical preservation, not "if" for the regulations. So I think it would be a good idea to just strengthen this statement. It could even say, um, "Determine what further regu- regulations and resources." Um, I just think that "if" doesn't sound like very strong.
I, I agree with you, trustee Donington. I, I'm committed, uh, myself personally, that this is something that we wanna dive into and determine what can be done. So I think that's a good call, instead of the word "if." Determine what further regulations and resources, uh, could be implemented. Does that make sense?
Like I said, it's up to the board. Uh, you know, I think that this was written with the sense of, you know, there was a, a, an element of, um, diagnosis before prescription, looking at the problem, determine first. But these are your priorities and whatever words you guys wanna use. This was, we took our best crack at it, but they, they, they need to reflect the will of the board, so.
Certainly. Uh, other thoughts from anyone else?
So my other-
Go ahead.
Sorry, my other comment is that, um, in our July meeting, there was a number eight, which was arts and entertainment. And so I would like to see that as our number eight strategic priority. I know that it released, received the least amount of votes, but there was, you could only vote on four things. So just even receiving any vote, I feel like it really makes it stand out. I think that, so, but in the draft, number eight was support and enhance the village's efforts related to arts, entertainment, and community identity. So I would like to see that added. I think that Arlington Heights, uh, Arlington Alfresco is fantastic, but what are we gonna do next? And so adding this as a t- strategic priority is gonna put staff time and budget time into this priority of art and entertainment, um, which art is a unifying force that brings people together. Um, it also fosters cohesion, cohesion in our community, um, and local pride. And then finally, it also enhances economic vitality through tourism and local support. So I think it's important to, to include it as our eighth and final priority. It supports the work that the Arts Commission is working on right now. It also supports the possibility of the downtown promenade changes and a possible ice rink.
Well, you sure don't have to twist my arm. So, um, I think, uh, what makes our downtown and our entire community so wonderful right now is that we do devote a lot of energy to arts and entertainment. So certainly not something that we should be shy about. So to me, adding an eighth that says that, uh, makes sense. Anyone else have thoughts on that? Trustee Zick?
Uh, I'll agree.
I agree, Trustee Dunnington. Please, thank you for bringing that up. I think it's a good point, so I think I'd like to see that added. I do have another question, if I could, just keep going.
Go right ahead.
The only one, number three, and I've read this a number of times, but until you actually said it out loud, it kind of, a couple of things, kind of, kind of, just want to make sure we're clear about here. So promote economic development initiatives to encourage timely progress on approved projects. Am I right in understanding, the way that comes out, we're trying to, 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 to fine-tune the process and make sure that we're moving things along quicker? Is that, that's the main premise behind that? Is that, is that correct?
I, I think it's a little bit of both. I think there's certainly an implication that we want to engage in process improvement, but I think a lot of the work we do in economic development is to be what I would call an instigator of progress, where you are trying to encourage property owners to develop their property, trying to find ways to, to get developers to be interested in our, in our community. And so rather than just sitting and waiting for the market to do what it's going to do, a lot of what we do is to try to be active and continue, you know, get those properties developed as quickly as possible so they can be, you know, producing economic activity and tax revenue for the community.
Which, which all makes sense. One of the things that we've heard through, through, you know, especially during the campaign and people have come in here, talked about, has always been the process of trying to get through, you know, some of the permits and get through things like that, you know, try to make that a little bit quicker. Would that be, because that would help promote economic development, it would help move things along a little bit quicker. Do we want to make that as part of, as part of that initiative where we are working on trying to fine-tune and make things a little bit more efficient?
You know, what, what is being said tonight is on the record. And if, you know, the board is saying that, that that's what they mean by this tonight, because I think, you know, we certainly, there was an implication, but if it's being more strongly said on the record, we will interpret it that way when we write the business plan, for sure. And so I think that you can word it more strongly if you choose, but what I'm hearing, and again, if your colleagues agree that we want that to be a priority, that's part of the reason to have these discussions and we will include that angle when we're developing projects for the, for the business plan.
Okay. I'd be curious to hear from, from my fellow colleagues on that, too. And then the other part of that, that is going to the end here, and attract unique business development to vacant properties to set Arlington Heights apart from neighboring communities. Now, when we say something like that, I don't think we're talking about so much as, you know, we're trying to find niche businesses to come in here, but we're trying to make it that we're trying to, we're not trying to look like every other town. We're not trying to look like Mount Prospect. We're not trying to look like Palatine. We're trying to look like Arlington Heights and do things that might be a little bit different. Not necessarily, I mean, bringing in niche, 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 you know, development and all that kind of stuff is nice, niche or whatever, how you ever pronounce it correctly. But we're not talking about just trying to do that, but we're just trying to do things that are going to be, hopefully set us apart. That's what we're trying to get to on that statement, right?
Yes. I mean, I think we, we are, care ourselves as a community that has high standards and I think that's what we're trying to say there, is that, you know, A, we're trying to, we acknowledge the fact that there are some redevelopment parcels that need attention in this community, you know, and those are those vacant parcels, but we're not going to just settle. We're looking to fill those vacancies with projects that really set us apart, that, something that is, you know, meets the high standards that this community has traditionally had.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Schwimbeck.
Thank you, Mayor. Randy, on that, number three, that was something that I've been talking a lot about is, you know, developing this empty land. And one of the things that I've, I've brought up before is that when staff is working with these petitioners on these large projects, as part of that, are you going to look into maybe charging some fees upfront that would go towards their permits once they?
We are, we are right now looking at doing a fee study on a variety of our fees within the village and that is one of the topics that's under consideration. That's something that'll come before the board in the relatively near future is the analysis that we put together on that.
Yeah, because that, I mean, that development to that land and putting them back on the tax, you know, and bringing in sales tax revenue is so important, but we've seen so many of these projects, as you say in that paragraph, just get stalled out and not go anywhere after staff has put in a tremendous amount of time. And I just think we ought to really push that forward where these developers have a little skin in the game and then that money that they get upfront can go towards that permitting when they finally start putting a shovel in the ground.
No, that's, that's fair and that's something you're seeing more and more in communities.
Yeah, yeah, because I, I really like that and I'm fully supportive of it, so.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Trustee Shirley.
And maybe Trustee Dunnington can help me, but we talked about the arts issue in the context of like murals and stuff like that. And I can't remember what meeting that was and why, why we were on that topic. Do you remember, Trustee Dunnington? It was, it was well before the strategic planning. It was, but anyway, we talked about that and, and I'm in agreement with adding number eight, but I guess, if you could, Randy, go back to the calendar as far as like the budget approval and whatnot and, you know, I guess my question is, how much of these priorities drive the budget submittals of the departments? Because as much as I was for all those things last time we talked about them and I think they're great ideas, I feel like we're up against a financial challenge coming up. I mean, we just passed those two taxes and I had a lot of people reach out to me and remind me that I voted for those taxes and why the heck did I do that? And, and so we're still up against a property tax increase somewhere north of 3% as we come up. And without any cuts, which I trust that we will discuss, you know, I'm just a little bit worried about adding things that are going to cost money. And I know that some of that stuff may seem like small potatoes, you know, it may be in the tens, 20, $30,000 range, but I just kind of feel like, I just want to make sure that if we add this one, it's not going to drive, you know, departments to add a bunch of stuff. I'm trying to figure out how are we going to discuss that kind of stuff? And Wendy, I'd love to hear your input because I just feel like we're kind of up against it. Maybe other people don't think that and maybe I wasn't paying attention enough, something I don't know. And we were talking about an eight and a half percent property tax increase before we talked about those two taxes. And they passed on relatively narrow margins. There certainly wasn't consensus. Different people voted yes on different ones. But now we voted for those. They were somewhat controversial. And now we're still up against a three and a half percent property tax increase. And I'm just, I'm just worried, I just don't want to have too much on our plate because I feel like maybe we're just sending the wrong message if we, if we keep on adding this kind of stuff. But I agree that those kind of things would differentiate us. They're great for the community. I mean, I'm all about, we talked about raps on the electric boxes, certainly have been a big proponent of new banners someday. Maybe we'll see some new banners out on the streetlight poles. But I'm just saying, I just want to make sure we're not like giving ourselves kind of a challenge that we're going to regret when it gets time to actually figuring out this budget challenge. Because what, the way I'm analyzing it is, we're down to either raising property taxes by three and a half percent or we got to go into reserves, is the way I heard the taxes discussed up here. And both of those are really bad choices, in my opinion. I'm not happy with either one of those. So again, I will support the addition of number eight, but I just, you know, I just want to make sure that it doesn't drive the budget submittals from the departments to, you know, to increase costs for new programs and new initiatives when, in my opinion, again, it's just my opinion, I'm the only one that's saying this, is just that we're up a very big challenge coming up. When we get these budget submittals from our departments, you know, we're up against it. I mean, if you look at the property tax rate increases for this town, we were doing a really great job and maybe it's caught up with us, right? I mean, while we were doing 0% property tax increases for four or five years in a row, inflation was two, three, and then, you know, after COVID, it went to five, seven, eight, whatever it did, you know? And we stayed zero. And so last year, we made an adjustment and we caught up a little bit and I fear we're going to have to catch up again. So I just wanted to say that out loud, that I, I just want to make sure that we don't take off or bite off more than we can chew when it comes to the finances. But I, I love all those ideas because I do think that, I think those things do make us differentiated, you know, differentiate us from other communities and the popularity of the downtown speaks for itself. I mean, people are coming here in droves. It's, it's an attractant. People, people love this place and it's a good thing. So I don't, I also don't want to poo-poo the idea of doing those things. It's just that, man, I'm, I'm sorry, but I, I'm not relishing these discussions coming up. When's the, when's the timeline, Randy, for our budget now?
The budget, we're shooting to get that to the board in late October. The first discussions, it'll be in mid-November and approval in December.
Okay. So it's coming up.
If you'd like, I can comment on that a bit in terms of how we approach.
You absolutely can, but anyway, and I'll just finish by saying, I support number eight and I'm looking at Trustee Dunnington because I remember very vividly that she brought it up and I fully support it and I still do, but that, that's all I had. I just wanted to say that out loud because I guess, maybe because of a little bit of the pressure I've been getting from people who are like, what on earth did you do, Scott? And I'm like, well, I thought I did the right thing.
Go ahead.
What I, what I was going to say is, I mean, I think, I think the, and this was the board's direction to add that opening statement, that, you know, we look at public safety, core services and fiscal responsibility first, always. And I think when we look at the budget, you know, the first things that we look at are, you know, doing things that we are legally obligated to do, performing those functions, looking at things that are responding to emergencies or things that come up that we couldn't have prepared for. And third, maintaining existing services. That's kind of how we look at, those are, that's where you start and that's what competes with everything else. And unless we're making a conscious decision to eliminate existing service, you know, everything else is competing with that and you have to have excess, you know, time or energy. Some of the, the things that we can do to advance these goals don't necessarily require money, but they require time. And so all of these ideas are going to be tempered by the reality of limitations in the budget and limitations in staff time. We can have lots of ideas on things we want to approve and I'm going to pick on Ms. Rodman's Department of Planning and Community Development right now. But if we continue to have the large number of major developments coming through here, absent assisting with, with staff or something like that, that's where they're going to be spending their time because we have to respond to applications as they come through for, for large projects and it minimizes the time you can spend on other stuff. But, but we also talk about better utilizing task forces, commission, boards and commissions, and how do we leverage those better? So those are all things we can do, but yes, certainly, we can do more if there were more money and resources or in time, for sure. But we know that there's not a limited amount and that, that's factored into the budget process, for sure.
All right. So I'm sorry, I'm not done. I had a couple more things that you brought up. Two things. First of all, and I should know this, but I don't, just so, this can be framed in people's minds. If we don't raise property taxes, like if we don't make any cuts to the budget, we gave the budget ceilings, and if we don't want to raise property taxes three and a half percent, if we want to have a 0% property tax levy this year, we will have to take how much, how many millions out of the reserves?
I don't have the number right in front of me, but I mean, it would be roughly one and a half million somewhere in, in that ballpark. But then the next year, assuming you would have to raise it another, you'd have to raise it 3 million. So the rate, the, the increase would be even larger. If you're looking at making it up a 3% this year, if you skipped it, drew down reserves one year, you'd need a 6% or 7% increase then just to get you back to where you were.
If we wanted to stay at our target of 40%.
Yeah.
Correct? So one and a half million represents what percentage of the reserve? In other words, if we take the million and a half this upcoming year and don't raise property taxes, our property, our, our general fund reserve goes from 40% to what percentage?
I can't, I can't speak to that. I don't have, I don't have the numbers in front of me right here.
And I didn't mean to catch you like.
Yeah, we, we, you know, we can do a more full analysis on this because a lot of it, what your reserves are depends on, there are certain things that we plan to do to reserve, to draw down our reserves. There are certain things that we do kind of on a, on a one-time basis. There may be one-time surpluses that we don't really want to count towards that because it's already, you're already planning on using it. So it's, it's hard to answer that question kind of in the, in the, in a vacuum. But, but we can do, brush the sherd when we get into the budget process, this is exactly the type of stuff that we're going to be talking about, is scenarios where we talk about, you know, options for the board to look at. But I think the, the one thing to note is what's really driving the property tax situation this year is two factors. One, as we talked before, the investments in the statewide, you know, pension plans that were, where you have a three-year rolling average and this is the last year that 2022 is on there, 2022 was a rough year for, for those investments. And so that, there's a state requirement to keep our tax levy up to, to match those pension levels. That's number one. Number two is a portion of the cost of the fifth ambulance is going to be borne by a property tax increase as well. Those are the two real factors that are, that are driving that. And we have had better performance in the, in, you know, more recent years, you know, this, the jury's still out on this year where we're going to end things, but, you know, so it's a, it's a rolling average, but that's what's driving those, those increase, the demand for that right now.
Okay. And I'm sorry to take this off topic, but that's all I have. Thank you.
I see Trustee Zig has his hand up again. Go ahead.
Trustee Lebeda, I think you, they haven't gone yet.
Well, if he has to follow, then.
Let's not fight about it.
Well, then I'll go.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I just kind of wanted to respond to some of the things. First of all, I'll go down the list. Number three, the, the statement of timely progress on approved projects. I know that we're thinking of that in terms of big projects, but I also think of it in terms of smaller projects. I can't tell you how many times we have sat here and approved a project that's, that's small. The staff has, has spent a lot of time working with someone and often those people need a lot of guidance because the small project people tend to be not that familiar with the process of, of, you know, trying to get approval for something. And we approve it and then it kind of goes into thin air and we never hear anything about that. So I'm hoping that with this, that we're also thinking about, you know, encouraging people. Now, people may have, I'm sure, have very valid reasons, probably money a lot of times or whatever, not to move forward with something. But I do get kind of frustrated with the fact that we spend time approving a project, staff spends a lot of time working on it and then it goes into the ether world. So that's kind of part of what I'm thinking of when I see number three. Number five, on the historic preservation part, I agree with Trustee Dunnington and I think the word what is jumped into my head even before she mentioned it. So I think that one word change is good. I also want to talk about the possible number eight in terms of arts and so on. And I think we already support some of that in terms of the Metropolis and other things, you know, with Sounds of Summer and other things that we do. So it doesn't necessarily mean that we'll be using an additional large expenditure to support the arts, but I think, and I think I mentioned this to Manager Recklaus during an, just on an email review, that by having it there, it, it does show also our support, continued support for things like the Metropolis and other things that we already do. And that's, that's why I think that number eight, proposed number eight is important. And so that's, otherwise, I'm, I'm pretty well satisfied with the rest of the way the priorities are written.
All set. Now Trustee Zig and then Trustee Manganar.
All right.
Okay.
Give a second crack.
Oh, you didn't get it? Oh, you didn't get a first one yet?
That's all right.
You can go.
I kind of like to go left.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
All right. Um, start with a question, Mr. Recklaus. What happens to the unfinished goals from priorities that aren't carrying over at the end of 2025?
Um, you know, generally, we, we, in terms of the business plan, I mean, priorities are written in such a way that they're, you know, they're never, they're never done. They're just priorities for this time period. In terms of the business plan items, we do try to see those into completion. If, if for some reason there's a delay or reason, we'll, and they will appear, the projects will appear in the business plan for the following year. There's enough overlap that a lot of these things can continue on. We do make a concerted effort to get them done, but sometimes because of staffing changes or other reasons, things don't get done. But we're, we're in reasonably good shape with the, with the business plan for, um, to round out this year.
Very good. Thank you. And, and thanks for coming back to the top of this page. It's exactly what I was thinking is, I think the intent of pulling those out as strategies was to recognize that they supersede whatever we think our priorities are, and we, we have to do them, and everything we do below will be informed by them. Um, on the economics, the one, the thing I want to stress is unique. Um, for me, Urban Air was the perfect example of that. That's something that puts a very, um, large unused space into a venue that people will, as Trustee Shirley said, come from all around to use because there is nothing like it. And I think continuing to attract things like that is what we need as opposed to, I don't think we need to follow, um, anyone economically, as, you know, we've proven with Alfresco and, and so on through the, through recent years. Um, I do agree that, and actually, one more thing on the, the economics, I want to use that as a plug for my Always Buy Arlington initiative. I know that there is a way that we can improve internal promotion across the village of the things that we have to offer our residents and to, it's something, uh, Trustee Zick mentioned the campaign, that we would go places and hear people talking about what's in their neighborhood. And I got to where I want to know what's in other neighborhoods. And I think that's something that could catch on across the village. Um, I absolutely agree, we should restore number eight. And we have local artists. We have art schools and students. I believe there's opportunities to do public art on a, on a lower budget, um, lower scale than, than we may have done in the past. And then, um, I think, lastly, I do agree that it, that the word what, further regulations, I think we could, we ought to stay with should rather than could, because again, it's less
Okay. Now, Trustee Zick.
Boy, I feel there's a lot of buildup to this, and hopefully I don't disappoint. Anyways, um, no, I just wanted, uh, Trustee Shirley, to, to the statements that you were making, essentially what you were getting down to is, is worrying about the, the, the property taxes and how we tax people. And I, and I get that. And Manager Recklaus knows, I'm, I'm, I'm still a proponent of trying to figure out how do we get to that zero percent tax levy? I think it's, I think it's a big thing. But Trustee Lebeda, you, 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 you kind of were echoing what was going around in my head right now. Having these eight, if we have these eight now, on here, doesn't mean that we're necessarily spending money on each one of them, because it can be something that can be, can be brought in between, or brought into other things. You know, say you're promoting economic development initiatives to encourage timely progress on approved projects. Okay, great. We bring in a project, Metropolis was the first thing that kind of came to my mind. We're, we're, if we bring somebody like that in, we're satisfying three, and we're also satisfying eight. So these things can kind of be brought together. They're not, don't necessarily have to be strategic initiatives or, 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 uh, special initiative that costs more money. It's, it's kind of saying, hey, as we're looking at some of these other things, let's consider this also. And let's see how we can kind of bring them together. Because I think all of us, I think all of us up here, we want to minimize the, the, the tax burden that we, that we have. But having something like eight on there definitely shows, I, I think, a little bit more to this community and what, and what we want to, and what we want to be. And I, and I think it just adds to the community, the, the way we're thinking. And I do just want to throw out there also, I do agree on five to also areas to determine, you can almost just get rid of if, just complete, to determine further regulations and resources that should be implemented, and just kind of go in there. And I, and I think that gives it a little bit more teeth. So thank you for the second time.
Okay, very good. Anyone else on this side? Trustee Dunnington?
Thank you. Just in response to, um, Trustee Shirley, for the, our, our public art program, I believe it was in April that I originally brought that up. And I have looked at what other towns have done for funding. I think that we're waiting to see what the Art Commission proposes. Um, I've seen other committee, communities, uh, will do a percentage of their, um, SIP fun, um, budget that they'll dedicate to art. They might do like a percent of capital improvement projects, and they'll, um, allocate that for art. Um, I've also seen where, I, and I think we did this in the project that was the Bradford Allen project, where we required the developer to add, um, uh, like, I think they're adding a sculpture to the front of it. So I think that's something that we required. And then also, I've seen other communities, um, apply for a lot of different grants for projects as well as doing fundraising for that. So I think there's a lot of different options for funding for that. I, and I had one last question. We didn't talk about number four at all, which is about street safety. And so I'm wondering if part of the business plan for that would be looking at the Neighborhood Friendly Streets program to see if that is appropriate for Arlington tonight's.
Yeah, I think it's, I think that's kind of, it, it can be that project could, I mean, I, we, we generally write things, these things broader so they're not involving one project. But again, this is something that's on the record tonight. We know that that's something that's come up before. It's something that we're talking about in terms of engineering standards for, for the community and for making things more pedestrian friendly. So it's something that's in the hopper, and staff would see that as a project under, under this.
Great. Thank you.
Again.
Again.
Trustee Lebeda.
Yes, yes. Speaking again of the arts, but also number three, where we talk about the vacant properties, one thing that, you know, I've thought of that isn't exact, necessarily costly, is, um, you know, when we do have vacant storefronts, is to encourage, um, an art project to be in the window. Not necessarily, if, if the landlord will, will allow, it doesn't necessarily have to be something that people would go in to see, so they don't have to worry about having the place open or something. And I bring this up because I've seen this on State Street in Chicago, because there've been, there are many, um, empty storefronts in State Street. And it's really nice when you can see some sort of a beautification through an art project of some kind. Could utilize the Art Commission to help vet possibilities. And, you know, often they're larger sorts of things, um, but they're temporary for a period of time. And that's something that can be done at a minimal cost with, of both time and staff, in my opinion.
Thank you. All right. A couple of thoughts that I wanted to share. Number one, once this gets posted, uh, for all to see on the internet, I would encourage that first statement to be bold. Everything from the, the village's highest priorities will always be the maintenance of public safety, the provision of core services, and the continuing of continuation or continuing of fiscal responsibility for taxpayer resources. I think everyone wants to see that. And it's sometimes titles can get missed, and they go right to the seven or eight bullet points and not see that. So let's make sure that that's front and center. Um, in fact, um, when I would speak in front of audiences, whether it's at the Sounds of Summer or whatever, I, one of the things I try to remember to say are, that is our main job. As the nine of us up here, our main job is to be good stewards of our taxpayers' dollars and provide these services. But at the same time, every once in a while, we have a little bit of fun together. And the fact that our staff and all of our public works and so on put together these wonderful concerts in the park for everyone to enjoy, that's part of the benefit of what we all do together. And that's why number eight, I think, will be an important add here to be all of that. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to say was, in regard to that number eight, and in regard to comments that were just made here, um, it is true that we can raise funds. There are programs that can be done from businesses, that can be done from individuals, uh, to support the benefit of some new entity like an ice rink or anything like that. Uh, if we do get lucky enough to have that happen, it will not be paid for by taxpayers. It's not going to be paid from our, any of our funds. It will be raised by the businesses downtown and other donors. Um, and, and I think those are, those are worthy causes and, and worthy opportunities. Um, and I did have one other thing. And this might be something that we'd have to really navigate through the Design Commission. I did an interview recently with a new, uh, candidate for our Arts Commission, Sarah was her name, right? And she was fabulous. And one of the things we talked about was public art on a building's wall. And I can't tell you how many times in my world, in my lifetime, working on buildings, and there are sometimes walls that don't really want to have windows in a certain area because it's a kitchen behind there or something. And if you, if you had an opportunity for a framed out specific area for public art on a building, and could somehow not have it qualify as a sign that then competes with our sign ordinance, that might be an avenue to, to go down with some of, in the future for projects, whether, whether or not it is an appropriate wall on an appropriate building in an appropriate part of town or what have you. But once in a while, a miracle happens, and something like that is possible. And, and I think it would be good to, to advocate that. Because I think, I think it's, shows well when we have colorful contests and creative, you know, opportunities like that. So I would be in favor of those kinds of thoughts as well. That's it for me. Um, anybody else? Anyone else in the audience that wanted to weigh on this? If not, um, I think, do you want a motion or do you need a motion for this?
Yeah, if, if we could. And so just, what, just to make sure I'm hearing everybody straight. And the, the good news is there seems to be a good consensus on these changes, which is always nice. The bad thing is if there's some kind of split on words. But, um, so I'm hearing that, um, on number five, we're changing the word if to what. We're adding back the originally drafted number eight, which was support and enhance villages' efforts to, related to the arts, entertainment, and community identity. Um, and then we are going to, um, bold and otherwise highlight the, that, uh, the segment of the opening statement related to how the village's highest priorities will always be the maintenance of public safety, provision of core services, and continuing fiscal responsibility with taxpayer resources. So what, what I would say is, you know, we can say, um, someone can make an approval, make a motion for approval of priorities as, as amended.
Okay. Is, can someone make that motion? And we'll have one more round of discussion?
Um, I'll make the, the motion for approval of the 2026, 27 strategic priorities as amended.
Second. Okay. Motion made by Trustee Zick, second by Trustee Schwingback. And I saw a hand go up in the audience, so I, I want to give you a moment. If you want to run up here and, uh, introduce yourself quickly and share your thoughts.
My, my name is Robert Schmidt. Um, I like where this conversation is going because I feel like the arts department always gets the shaft. Um, I have a background in film and video. I went to Columbia College downtown, 2008. So I've done everything from editing films to, uh, drawing to, uh, art shows. Uh, and you guys discussing all of this kind of, uh, really excited me. And I'm looking forward to you guys putting number eight back up for the public. So.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
Rob.
Robert, I meant. That's what I said, Robert. Thank you, Robert. Okay. Further discussion from the board? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? None? Okay. Motion is approved. And, uh, I think that's it for tonight. Is there any other business? If not, uh, nothing from the manager?
Nope.
Mayor, like, if I can make just a quick announcement.
Sure.
I just want to make an announcement and, um, invite the rest of the trustees. Uh, this Sunday, September 7th, is the Fifth Annual Battle of the Badges, um, softball tournament. Um, both our police department and our fire department will be having teams. Um, this will be, um, city sixteen inch softball style. And, uh, there'll be food, drinks, entertainment, so on and so forth. And I believe, Mayor, you will be there to kick things off. And any, I, I know I will be attending. Any other trustees that want to attend are more than welcome to attend.
What's the time and occasion?
It's Sunday, September 7th, at, um, I, I believe the games will start at nine, but they're saying eight-thirty here online. And it's at Methodist Park, which is at 216 North Prindle.
Excellent. It's a worthy cause, if there ever was one. It'll be a lot of fun. Anything else? Okay, I think that's it. A motion for adjournment, please? Move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Schwingback, second by Trustee Dunnington. All those in favor say aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.